City Council meeting. This is the City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. We'll have call to order. And invocation by myself and a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Jeff. Please stand. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for all the blessings you bestowed on our city. And mostly, we thank you for the reason for the season, Lord, for the birth of our Savior, Jesus Christ. We pray for those in our city, Lord, who might be sick or alone. We pray that you just put people on their path so they experience the joy of Christmas. Lord, we pray for wisdom for our nation, our state, and for us in this City Council meeting today, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and just as are all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present, that's the last one of the year.
Yeah, we need to approve the minutes of December 3rd, 2019, regular meeting in dispense with the reading.
So move, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments? Questions from the council? Council, cast your vote. Okay, we have two add-ons, is that right?
Yes, sir, we have two add-ons for today. The first one will be number 12, under new business, introducing ordinance, repealing section 102-11 of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances and reenacting section 102-11 as set forth herein in reference to a public safety access to controlled access residential subdivisions and commercial premises, first reading. This item is being added on due to removal of the original document for title and wording changes.
Make the motion, we add number 12.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Mr. President, the ordinance, the spelling, it concerns me. Here in the ordinance, it's called premices instead of premises.
The origin, the finished ordinance will have the correct spelling on it.
Okay, okay, and it's in, it looks like it's in two places. Okay. As long as we don't approve the one that is premices, I'm fine with it.
Thank you.
The mices other.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Any other comments from the council? Please cast your vote. Okay, we got another one?
Yes, sir, the next one will be number 13, under new business, approve reported change order number one for the north south waterline connector project for an increase of $140,299, total cost of contract with change order, $1,544,559. This item is being added on due to recent additions to the scope of work to assist with future water main abandonment project concerning Hamilton Road.
Make the motion, we add number 13. So move.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? No spelling corrections on this?
None. Oh, I don't know.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
That other one just kind of stuck out.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make the motion, we approve the agenda as amended. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Okay, under ceremonial matters, Ms. Tamara Crane, the Executive Director of the Bossier Council on Aging, is going to give us a program transportation update. Welcome.
Yes, good afternoon, thank you all so much. I actually, before I get into the full transportation update, I have a video that I'm going to share with you all. And to give you all a little bit of background on this video, I do a lot of grant writing. And wrote a grant that got me connected to a gentleman in California, Mr. Webb Weinman, who's over my jump. And what my jump is, is they do bucket list for seniors. And so, he got in contact with me and was working on a grant and asked would I possibly have any seniors that might have a bucket list, and if so, what? And he was hoping to get a grant for this, but when I kind of connected him with one of our seniors, he says, even if we don't get the grant, we're making this happen. So this video actually aired on CNN Heroes that I'm about to show you. So this was national or even global coverage at this point. This is not our new transportation program at the Council on Aging. But I hope the audio works and it was skipping a little bit, but hopefully we'll have good internet here and it'll work. I tell seniors, live by two rules. There are no bad bucket list wishes. Hold on, it's not showing, let me go back. Sometimes it's wants to just play be funny. But to give you a little bit of other background on this, this gentleman, is it showing now? Yeah, it's showing. Get it back big, okay. Is it up the volume? There is a sense of accomplishment. It's not going to come out of my phone. It's coming up. My name is Webb, and I help seniors achieve their dreams. My dad is a piece of work. He's a 95-year-old veteran. He was in World War II, participated in the invasion of Normandy at D-Day. He was taller, always laughing, always crying, always had friends, and would do anything for anybody, gave his own shirt off his back. My daughter is big, big. With that aging, the slowdown, his body is not heating up, but his mind is. He wants to be better than he was, and it aggravates him, and he can't do what he used to be able to do. The reality of living in isolation is out there and surreal, and that's really one of the driving forces for us to go, grab the bucket list out of them. He saw the balloon being blown out, and I looked at his face, his smile could have filled up the balloon, but it's a moment of dying, though, this is where I'm supposed to be. That's cool. Got what I was asking for, and he still smiled. I'm proud of him. He's smiling, that's terrible, he retired. I look at it like much more than a hot air balloon, like, oh, beautiful. It was a moment in time to share a little space with two heroes that get shot in the room. It's a feeling that's indescribable. I could feel the joy in their heart, I could see the spark in their eye, and feel the gratitude that fills the air. And I think, knowing that they're feeling the same way, is really all I needed to know this was a successful mission. He won't believe these songs, and he keeps doing adventurous things. It was something he never experienced before, and he'll never forget it, ever. Even in the 90s, we're still flying high. Thank you, Mark, I want to thank you, it was a great day. I want them to know that it won't end today. Everyone deserves it, all deserves it. That this is part of their life, they don't want to pause it or cancel it. So hot air balloons are also not our new method of transportation either, though. But this was very awesome, and I just wanted you all to see that because the impact that we're making in Bossier Parish to our seniors, y'all, is on a global level at this point. I mean, this aired, and we did, we've gotten a few emails from people all over and saw this. Want to touch out to Mr. Jim because he is a World War II veteran and was on Omaha at D-Day, and it's just connected us on a much wider level, so just want to kind of share that with you all. So the grant, or the way I want to talk to you about our transportation program is we provide transportation for all of Bossier Parish. Our transportation buses start as early as 4:30 in the morning, getting folks to dialysis appointments, all the way sometimes into 5 o'clock in the evening, sometimes still getting folks home from dialysis. We go to the grocery store, we shop in Bossier City, Walmart, and Super 1. We also have access to the base, we go to the base once a month for those that have their own access to the base. We shop for Horton, I mean, sorry, for Plain Deelin, they go into Benton and come into Bossier for shopping, and Benton shops in Benton and then also comes into Bossier for shopping. We also take our sites to our, seniors to our sites, and then we do medical appointments. Medical appointment is a large amount of what we do for our seniors. So with the funding that we get, both through you all, our police jury, and our main funding is the Governor's Office of Early Affairs, we help supplement all this different transportation that we do. Our seniors, however, do for medical, provide a small stipend to help cover that medical appointment, to help us continue those programs. All of our buses, we have really tried to make sure that we're keeping our buses running great. We have cameras, we have GPS tracking on them, so we can, I could right now pull a bus up and show you where it is, but in case of accidents or thefts or whatever, we can utilize those services. And all of that also costs. So one of the things we looked at doing was we looked at what we're getting our seniors to mostly, which is medical care, and then, like I said, groceries and sites. And medical care is what they pay for. And we know that our seniors are on a fixed income. And some of our seniors, they access us for a lot of other stuff besides transportation. They come to us for their meals, they come to us in the wintertime to stay warm, they don't have to turn the heat on in their house, or in the summertime, they don't have to run the AC. We also refer a lot of our seniors to programs like at Office of Community Service to help with rent and/or utilities, because they're on a fixed income. So I had a grant come across my desk and really thought about all of these concepts that tie into this. And access to care really seemed to ring a bell with how our seniors are getting to the medical care. We also know that in accessing care, it affects Medicare and Medicaid and how they get to their doctor visits. And when they're not accessing their care properly, they go into the hospital, and that drives hospital rates up. So I wrote the grant to the Christus Fund, and in this grant, I put that I wanted to be all, be able to offer free access to healthcare, regardless of anyone's income, if they needed to get to a medical doctor and they're over the age of 60 and live in Bossier Parish, I wanted to be able to provide that. So we looked at our units of service we've been doing the past year and where we thought we might go, because we really expect that more people might kind of come to us, because lots of times, our seniors, we have a very prideful group of seniors in Bossier Parish, they really say, well, someone else needs it worse than me, or there's someone else who could really use it more than me. And they want to hold off and hold off until their, their situation is so dire that they maybe even surpass what we do. So we didn't want to make it about income, it's just about if you need a ride to the doctor. So we were able to get that grant, we actually got a letter of support from the Chamber, they sent us a letter about how the need for transportation, we are one of the main providers in all of Bossier Parish. There are a few other ones, but we do cover the whole parish. And so we were able to get that grant for $25,000. So effective January 1, and based on the amount that we got, we anticipate to be able to go about six to eight months, offering roughly 1,200 to 1,300 rides to our seniors of Bossier Parish, that we will be able to get them to the doctor at no cost. And what this means is that's going to be money back in their pocket that maybe they were paying to us. Some of them do use Uber or Lyft, some of them utilize taxis, maybe it's the families that have also helped them, but now they don't have to get that money out of their pockets, they can keep that money for their bills, their medicine, and even food. So we wanted to come to you all today and kind of announce that, because we're leveraging what you all give us, the supports that we get throughout the community, to help fully support the seniors in our area. And I really would like to also challenge you all that as you all know seniors in you all's districts, to let them know, because having worked in the long-term care setting and healthcare for almost 20 years, that is sometimes the big issue, is they may go to the hospital and get out, but they don't go back to the doctor, or they don't go to get that medicine, or they don't follow up with that next appointment. And that's what we want to eliminate, so that way we can help these seniors stay at home, living in your districts and being an active part of our community. So we're so pleased to announce this, and we're ready to kick it off in January and just get the word out to our community that that's what Bossier Parish is about. Do I have any questions? I know I told you all.
Any questions, counsel? Well, Ms. Crane, I want to thank you for coming, and you've helped me tremendously, tremendously with some residents in my district that needed those services.
No problem. And thank you all, so please, think of two or three people you all can share their word with. We really want people to know about what we do, and maybe this will open the door for other services that we do, is by helping them get to the doctor, and then they can see what else we do for the community, too. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, and we'll move on to committee reports. Stacy Fernandez, City Finance Director, will give her monthly finance report.
Good afternoon, counsel, I've distributed the financials for the month ending December 30th, 1990, 2019, excuse me. Okay, on page one, we have revenues by fund, and at the end of November, we were at 109% and the general fund portion of the sales tax was 102%. Page two, our expenses by fund, which we are at 94%. Page three is our sales tax, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but the state of Louisiana had some cyber attacks, and they are the collector for, for the DMV for the city of Bossier, so we actually wound up getting those funds one day late because of that. So this number, had it been correct, would not be negative 312, it would be positive 90,000 or .2% positive, which is the first time we've been positive all year. And that should be reflected in December's numbers. On page four, the Manning Report, we're at 667 employees compared to last month, 672, and we are under budget by 34 employees. And the final page, page five, is our Water and Sewer Report. For the month, we're at 148% over last year. Year-to-date, we're at 64%. And to the budget, we're 104, and the rolling 12-month is 119. Have any questions?
Any questions, counsel? That's a good report, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have Mr. Gordon Mosley, the Assistant City Attorney, is going to give his first property acquisition update. This is your inaugural report.
That's right, well, good afternoon, counsel.
We welcome you.
Yes, sir. Last time I was up here, you all asked me to prepare a slideshow of all the properties we're working on right now. So what I did was I got with some engineers, took some aerial photos of where the project will ultimately be, and shaded them green and red. Green means we've acquired the properties, and red means we have not acquired the properties. I'm going to go through projects, ones that are completed, and then ones that we began. So I'm going to start first with the cross-access drives.
It's not working, Gordon?
I think it's turned on. So as you all can see here, this is the cross-access drive on the west side of the Kroger Walmart property. There are three properties that were affected, three property owners, we had Panda Express, Walmart, and Kroger. We have expropriated that property. They have not objected to the public purpose of that, but they do have a year to object to the amount we compensated them for. So they have a year to make that objection, and neither of them have made that objection. This is the east side, cross-access drive, just two property owners, Walmart and Kroger, and again, neither have objected to the amount we compensated. Here's the 42-inch waterline project from Shed Road to Airline. As you can see, all the property is green, there's no red, so we've acquired all property necessary for that project. Moving on to the Walter, Bigby Carriage Way, I have broken this project into two separate photos, south and north. Here's the south portion of the project. As you can see, a majority of the property has been acquired. We still have a couple that are red, we need to do, we're working through some finer details, they're a little more complicated than the others. Moving to the north portion of the project, as you can see, a majority of it's green, we still have a couple of properties left, and Ronnie Smith and me and the appraisers are all working through those now.
Gordon, is that red, is that that little shopping center right there? You own Benton Road?
I believe that is the shopping center.
I think that's the Nichols Oil, isn't it, the red?
The red is Nichols and Moore, and then that is the shopping center that the city already owns. This is the Melrose Plantation Project. As you can see, we still have about half the property to acquire. This is a road and a utility project. We have four properties left to acquire. I know the Bossier Parish School Board has certain property that they've already signed the deed, and we just need to record before we officially own it, but that will leave three remaining property owners that we need to acquire property from. Coleman Street. Mark went to Alexandria today to talk with DOTD. All this green property is city-owned property. We don't have to acquire it, obviously, but we still have to do title reports on it according to DOTD standards. But the remaining red property, we will have to acquire once the right-of-way plans have been submitted and approved by DOTD.
Gordon, can you go back?
Yes, sir.
The perpendicular to the, is that the railroad tracks?
Yes, sir.
The red? So that's just a dead-end part of Coleman?
That's a, that's actually a drainage project.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, so this isn't the, is this, it's not the actual roadway, that's...
It's not the roadway, but it's, it's part of a, a overage on that road that's going to equal about a million five, so I, I don't understand the purpose of the, of the...
I don't either.
Except to enhance the value of the property that's already been purchased from the city.
But I mean, well, anyway, I know Mr. Hudson's not here, but Mayor, if we could, next week or whenever, I'd like for, to gain an understanding of why we're expending that additional million and something dollars in...
In the January meeting?
Well, I guess Mr. Netherby's coming up.
That's where the main drainage goes down through there, so I would assume they're improving the drainage from the street to go into the ditch behind Bossier High School.
That's the end of the football field right there.
That's where the Bossier ditch starts and goes toward Hamilton Road right there. So I would say that's going to be a drainage easement, it's going to be improved there.
Well, anyway, I know we're just speculating, but I, I think that we ought to understand the true necessity of the additional million, four, or five, whatever it is, and, you know, is it something that is worthy of that expenditure, that's all.
Yeah, because Mark had called me yesterday, one of the way down there, he told me that, you know, there was about a million two still short, but I thought it was more for...
That's right, is this the last meeting this year?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Wow, you're right, January. We would have forgotten by then.
January 7th. I'm writing it down.
Oh, thank you.
Building, building the road and everything, but he didn't say nothing about property acquisition, but it's kind of weird.
Why is that a DOTD project?
They gave us money, they gave us the initial million, whatever it is, million and some change, and it's about half of what Mark said we really need.
Carrie, let me ask, let me ask you a dumb question, I guess. You know, I walked that ditch from the back, there are the railroad tracks, all the way down to Cross Hamilton Road, Benton Road. Until we fix the ditch, why do we want to, I mean, the ditch back there doesn't even drain, it's just woods and crap, and, uh, don't we need to get that done first?
Well, they're going to be improving the drainage on the street, I would assume, when they're building it, so there's going to be additional flow there, and I would think we would want to, because we have to also remember, when we have floods on the Red River, we set a pump up at the Traffic Street Underpass, and we pump it up over the hill, and it drains down Coleman Street and goes down this very pipe here, and at times, we've almost flooded a couple of buildings down there on the very west end of Coleman Street. So I, I think it's something that's important.
What we're going to do, if the hospital ever comes there, and that's probably another question, but...
Well, it would still serve the same purpose.
I mean, if you pump it down Coleman Street, that's going to be right off of Coleman Street.
Well, right now, that's the only place we have to go with it. You know, the, there's, there's no way to pump it toward the casino parking garages, so we, we have to come up and over that hill there to have a place for it to run to.
Lot of questions on that one. Thank you.
We have plenty of time to prepare.
Next project is the Viking Drive widening project. It's kind of difficult to see, because we're really only taking frontage of property, but it goes Swan Lake all the way to Benton. And I talked, talked to Charlie Cool today, he got some feedback on the right-of-way plans from DOTD. They, he said there were minor changes, minor revisions, and that he's going to resubmit those plans before the end of the year for final approval. Finally, this is a utility project on Old Menon Road and Airline. There's two property owners involved. We've done the title reports, but we have not, we have not acquired either of those properties, so we're going to begin that process now. And finally, this is an East Texas temporary easement for a...
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover investigation, survey cost, and initial repairs of the East Texas street collapse for a total of $65,000 to come from the sewer capital contingency fund.
So move.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $151,000 from the 2016 sales tax bond issue to supplement the cost of construction of the Tinsley concession restroom bid, final reading?
So move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $900,000 to come from the 2017 sales tax bond issue to be used to supplement the previously appropriated 1.5 million, with all going towards change order quantities for the Swan Lake Road Improvement Project, I-220 to Monica Lot Road, and to include street lighting, and to include a traffic signal at Innovation Drive.
So move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience?
Yeah, Mark's not here, huh?
Mark's not here.
This is the final reading?
Yes, sir. Do you want to...
Carry on.
Do you hear it?
No, I'll get with Mark.
Okay, any other comments from the audience? Okay, any other comments from the audience? Or the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby, please.
Who we missing?
I did not. Okay.
Here we go.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to acquire property on behalf of the city of Bossier and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof for any city-funded or road or utility project. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel?
Well, relative to this ordinance, I wanna thank Mr. Mosley. He, you know, met with several council members, and along with his fantastic presentation, was able to convey the value of this ordinance in expediting the process of completing projects. So I wanted to thank you, Mr. Mosley.
I'll second that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Comments from the audience? Questions from the counsel? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to acquire property on behalf of the city of Bossier and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof for any federal or state-funded road and utility projects. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote. Okay, new business.
Hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at the following legal address, 2121 Smith Street, Bossier City, Louisiana, 71112. Counsel, this is a carryover from the December third agenda meeting, or council meeting.
Mayor, counsel? We sent a letter to re-either have this house repaired or have it torn down back in September. It was signed for by K. Smith. The condemnation's been filed on this house. The roof leaks, the fascists officer fallen off the house. Parts of the electrical and the plumbing system have been gutted out of the inside. The bathrooms have been destroyed. This house, this year, we've had to go back and clean it up four different times. We've had to remove inoperable vehicles from the house. We've had people sleeping in the inoperable vehicles in the morning when we've gone to tow them and had to have them leave. We found needles in the yard, there's human waste in the yard. We feel that this house needs to be done away with.
Yeah, it was pretty bad.
Counsel, Robin Harville, we were appointed to provide notice to the two absentee owners who are absent from the state. Kyoko Schrotke lives in Waterworks, New Jersey, and her brother Ben Schrotke lives in Texas. We provided the notices in addition. We were able to reach out to them via various search engines, Facebook, Facebook messaging. Have received absolutely no response to our request to their input with regard to these proceedings.
You know, I saw Ben there about six or eight months ago. You know, he'd probably just gotten out of jail, but, you know, God, this is what, this is what these guys, and Jimmy and Gordon helping me with, I guess, my district, we have people just come and squat in these houses. You know, as a cop come last time on this house, you know, the same guy been in and out of there. He arrested him, took him to jail, 'cause he had warrants.
The last time we were there, I issued him a ticket because he failed to vacate the house. And he had a warrant for his arrest already, and he was arrested then.
And they just get in there, and they go someplace else and get water. You know, you feel sorry for them, but then again, we can't have these, this happening, 'cause it's, they look horrible.
Make the motion, we proceed with demolition.
Yeah, second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-19-28, City Garage Roof Restoration.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is a hundred and eighty-five thousand. It was approved in the regular 2019 capital outlay budget. There's one addendum, which included the sign-in sheet to the mandatory pre-bid meeting, provided questions and answers, provided approval of manufacture for liquid roof coating polyurea. The first bid is from Advanced Roofing Services. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for one hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars even. One nine nine, two six one. The next bid is from Bronza Industries LLC. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for three hundred, two thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars. Three oh two, seven eight nine. And the last bid is from Louisiana Roof Coating LLC. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for one hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. One four seven, nine zero zero. Ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
So move.
Good. So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Montgomery?
Okay, number three.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affects property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to replace necessary UV components at the Red River Wastewater Treatment Plant at a cost of eighty thousand dollars to come from the sewer capital contingency funds. First and final reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel?
Yes. Ben. Is this something that's gonna be recurring? I mean, like, is there a life expectancy on whatever this replacement?
We don't. No, no, sir, it's not. Right now, the deliveries from Pratt have suspended. They have not brought any truckloads out the last couple of weeks. So this was in anticipation of having to do some accelerated maintenance on our UV system and be, have funds available to make that happen when we needed to make that happen. But as of right now, the system's working fine. So we will only expend that money if and when we need to.
Okay.
Currently, there's no need to spend any of that, but that could change.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Any other questions from the counsel? Harvey Dan, please cast your vote. Okay, number four.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached revised cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Bossier City and the Veterans Affairs. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an application analyst and the promotion of an existing systems administrator to systems engineer for the Department of Finance in the Information Services Division, effective January first, 2020. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution, amending resolution number five of 1998 for the organization of the city council, providing rules for the council and otherwise providing with respect thereto. It's first and final reading.
So move.
Counsel, I'd like to make a small amendment. And I'm gonna let Phyllis explain it to you in a minute, but I wanna add in there, there'll be no add-ons after twelve noon on the day of the regular council meeting, unless it's for a public emergency. And then I'm gonna let Phyllis let you explain how our time to do this is getting longer and longer and longer.
All right, I rescind my motion. And then make the motion for Mr. Williams' amendment.
Mr. Williams made the motion to amend it.
Okay, then I second his.
Phyllis, you wanna just real quickly brief?
The, whenever we have an add-on, we get it from the mayor's office, and I scan everything into the computer system. And then I have to update the computer system, add the add-on. Physically have to type it out, add the add-on, add the motions on both times. And then, if, I've already got the PCs out here set up. I send it out to the news media, to the council, so that they get those updates. And then I have to come out here and every single individual one, update every single computer because of the fact that they're already loaded with the information that's there. And so this will take, you know, if we stop at noon on that day, you know, if somebody comes in with two o'clock with a add-on, or one-thirty an add-on, and if, you know, the council has any questions of me, or if somebody else needs help, I'll be able to assist them, and it'll just make it a lot easier.
That sounds reasonable.
'Cause you know, always, when we get here, somebody, we've got questions for, pulling on her. And when she's not here, there's gonna be no way to add it on anyway, you know, so...
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for this amendment. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote. So now, we need to vote on this item as amended?
Mm-hmm.
So I need a motion?
Motion.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote. Okay.
Approve appointment of James C. Fine to the Metropolitan Planning Commission to replace Aaron Bowle, term effective December seventeenth, 2019, and will expire May twentieth, 2022.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel?
Mr. Fine's here, if you will. Jim, stand up.
Would you like to make a comment?
I'm down for it. I thank you all for the appointment. I've been living here since 1980, when I was in the military. Started building the company that I did have, started in 1999. And my partner decided he wanted to go on his own, and I started my new company in January, in February. So I've been here a long time and plan on being here a lot longer.
Well, we appreciate your willingness to serve.
Well, I have trouble saying no sometimes, I think, so... But thank you all.
Thank you. So ask for comments from the audience. Any questions from the counsel? Please cast your vote.
Approve report of change order number one for the Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project for an increase of twenty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Total cost of contract with increase, twelve million, nine hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars and eighty-three cents.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approve report of change order number one for the sewer subbase in B.C. fourteen project, an increase of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred dollars and eight cents. Total cost of contract with change order, two million, seventy-four thousand, nine hundred six dollars and eight cents.
So move.
Second.
Second. So we've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approve report of final change order for the Wallbrook Field of Dreams parking additions, an increase of four thousand, two hundred thirty-one dollars. Total cost of contract with change order, three hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred seventy-one dollars.
So move.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an assistant medical director for the Bossier City Fire Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance repealing section 102-11 of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances and reenacting section 102-11 as set forth herein in reference to the public safety access to controlled access residential subdivisions and commercial premises. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approve report of change order number one for the North-South Waterline Connector Project for an increase of one hundred and forty thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars. Total cost of contract with change order, one million, five hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote. That's all of our items on the agenda. I do have an announcement to read. This is our last meeting of 2019. Our next regular meeting will be on June seventh, 2020. All items for that agenda need to be delivered to the clerk by noon on January second, 2020. I would like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. Does counsel have any comments?
And a Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And, Mr. President, do we get paid for these next couple of weeks if we don't have...
I don't think I pay ever changes yet. I hasn't for thirty years.
I didn't know if we got vacation pay or anything like that.
No vacation pay.
Mr. Williams, would you know?
Yes, sir, I think you're on vacation all the time.
That's enough comments. Mayor, do you have anything?
This is a public conference.
Tomorrow at eleven, there'll be having a mayor's Christmas lunch upstairs. You're all invited. Groceries will be fine and cheap.
Any liquor?
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Cancel decor.
This meeting is adjourned. Happy New Year.